The special meeting of the Board of Directors for Paradise Irrigation District to get, to order on July 31st at 3:07 PM. Please stand with me and pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
Here now.
Vice Director Hunt?
Here.
Director Flusher?
Here.
Director Cala?
Here.
Okay, public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter on that that is not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity to speak on each subject will be allowed at the time of the agenda item. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will go on to new business. California Special District Association, consideration to approve Board of Directors attendance at the CSDA Annual Conference, September 29th to October 2nd, 2014, in Palm Springs. Action may be taken. Who wishes to speak to this subject?
Well, I will. I'm the one asking permission to go down there.
Are you the only one going?
Well, I don't know. I'm the only, I'm the only one that asked.
Okay.
So, knowing that we need to put it on the agenda and have the board approve any expenses like that in advance of going, which is not the way that we used to do it in the past. But, you know, I've gone through this series of training courses down there, and when I was first elected, over the, it took me a couple of years to get them done, maybe three years. And then after I got the basic training courses done, I went back for another meeting, kind of like a refresher deal, and it's been maybe three years since I've been, been before, down there with them again, and I just thought it might be nice to go back, develop some of these connections and relationships with other board members, talk about our problems we have up here with them, their problems they have on their, with their board, different issues, maybe get some ideas from them. And I know that I went through the, the schedule of offerings here for those breakout sessions, and they actually have probably more breakout sessions than I'll be able to attend because there's, you know, for a particular timeframe, you pick one of them, and in, on almost each of these pages, I always have two or three of them highlighted that I want to go to. So anyhow, that's what I'm presenting toward the board, if they would allow me to go down there and, and pay for the expenses for that, that conference.
Any questions from the board members?
Are we a member of the Special Districts Association?
No.
The dues are, the dues for CSDA are pretty high, so we, I brought it to the board quite a few years ago, and it's just hard to justify being in Aqua and CSDA because of the expense of being a member. So you pay, I think it's $150 more for the conference being a non-member, but we're talking about $30,000, I think.
Oh, I thought it was fif- fifteen, but yeah, that's, it's big. And they put on very good training courses.
Right. What is, I read in the post what the cost was. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Just, just to let you know, it isn't estimate the cost because with board members, food must be actual cost, you cannot take per diem on food. So that would be the one variation of the cost of the conference would be the meals because of actual cost, but probably gonna be very close.
Big mac and, big mac and fries, $7.50 every day, and it's pretty easy to calculate.
But that, that could be a variation.
Bag of popcorn?
You don't get per diem?
We'll find a theater with popcorn.
I know, I was gonna say, let's just turn them into a theater, I know, really. $6.75 for a ticket, we're set up.
With Calafco, I get per diem.
I ran off, I ran off the, I ran off the entire program, although I know how to do that, hard on it, paper and ink, and you have down here $2,095 or something, I just had it a bit ago before I had it up there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the thing I was wondering, Ken, you only have $109, can you fly on to Ontario for $109?
We've already searched it. In fact, we've already got them booked.
Yes, you can. It's, it's Southwest offers from Sacramento.
$109.
It's an unusual, yeah.
Yeah, John Wayne, that's John Wayne.
Ontario.
Ontario, yeah.
And I was smoking rate, and so we got it because even if you didn't approve it, this is a board, you get a year with Southwest to use it on another flight with no change fees.
Smoking rate?
Smoking rate.
They don't allow smoking on airplanes.
They do, they smoke. You play.
Okay.
Well, I've been trying to, for different purposes, on a personal thing, to book round trip from Sacramento to Los Angeles, and I figured, okay, well, I'm gonna be able to get a great bargain there, but the lowest I can find those tickets for is, I think it was about $175 a person, round trip, and that was the lowest. The norms were up around $250, and then when George told me that he had found this, flying in that direction to Ontario, especially with him being able to take advantage and use those tickets, should the board say, we're not gonna do this, and I said, well, I'm committed to going, so book them for me, and if the board says no, then at some point in the future, staff.
And then car rental out to Palm Springs.
Well, we're getting to Palm Springs from Ontario.
Rent a car.
Rent a car.
If you don't have that doubt here, though.
Flying into Palm Springs is much more expensive.
Oh, yeah.
And very limited times.
No, I realize, I just thought, it's a lo- long walk. Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's an hour drive, isn't it, about?
Well, I think Ontario, for some reason, is promoting people to come to them, and who knows, they may, that may be why the rate's so low, because like I told last time, the rate between Santa Barbara and hotels in Ontario are $100 a night difference.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so Ontario must be trying to encourage people to come, come to them, and that may be part of it, I don't know.
I floated Ontario, when I was in the middle of my career, I flew into, had quite a number of conferences, it's Palm Springs, that's where we see going to the winter time. In fact, I taught a couple of short courses for the College of the Desert, which is Palm Springs, but it's actually desert, 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 whatever it is, and we had a lot of fairer meetings there, and they know how to put it on, and this is really a great program. But as I thumbs through it, and Ken, you and I attended, I attended, didn't even know you were gonna go, the one put on by this outfit down to Sacramento for beginning, for board members, that was just a year ago, or a year and a half ago, or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was really well done, but as I thumbs through this thing, and I had to do this a couple of times to my employees that work for me, I'm not sure we're gonna get our $2,000, we're deficit spending right now. We are deficit spending, you know, so somewhere we gotta put the brakes on, and I love to go to meetings, in fact, I've had three already today, and I'm just getting a good start, you know, I love to go to meetings, whether, no matter where the hell they're at, and for the markets, all this, you know, but you gotta weigh it, so, you know, so I'm really at a ponder on this because I see where he's coming from, and they're very good, but one of the other factors, any time that I've ever attended, and I've attended several of them in Palm Springs, as an annual meeting, I, we've always, the organization I was working for has always been a member. See, so it seems kinda strange to me to go to an annual meeting at that kind of a cost and not be a member, but maybe it's the $30,000 dues. Do we know, I asked that question when I got back from down to Sacramento, because I really didn't know that we weren't a member until I got back, or down there, I found out. Is it that much the cost? And what, yeah, but what would the advantages be, because they have lobbyists and all this type of thing?
There really isn't that much of advantage for BID.
You get, you get the lobbying group, just like Aqua Lobbies, for us, you give discounts on the education, and they do offer.
They offer healthcare, they offer all the healthcare insurance and liability that we get through Aqua JBI.
Yeah. I talked to Mike Trigg, and I was really concerned about this and other things, and they don't belong to this either, but they belong to the one that there's 63 rec, park systems in it, and I was kinda connected a little bit with those when I was teaching some of that kind of stuff. I put out a program there, an educational type program, and so it's really, it's really interesting. But they're all kind of an offshoot, even this Aqua, and I could remember the name of it, this Aqua is kind of an offshoot of this Special Districts Association, is it?
No, it's its own.
They're different entities.
It's its own entity.
But they're kind of an offshoot.
No, they actually were competitive for quite a while, and now finally they're starting to join together a little more on working with legislators on common ground issues, so they're starting to make friends with each other. The county resource conservation district is a member of this, of this, and they're so poor, I don't know how they afford it, and maybe they've got a special thing for somebody that's broke. Well, the, the annual dues are based on your.
Revenue?
Revenue.
So if you don't have any revenue, you're, so they're broke, so they're broke, so the dues are pretty cheap. That's, that's the way Lafco is, too.
Yeah.
Based on your revenue, yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion that we send Director Hunt to the California Special Districts Association meeting in Palm Springs, September 29th through October 20, excuse me, October 2nd, 2014. Really long, really long, really long conference in there, so.
Okay. I'll second it.
Well, I have a move, it's been moved and seconded. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this subject? Seeing none, okay. How about directors? Any other further discussion?
I, I, I just don't think it's money we should spend, well, we're in the financial situation we are, and I think Doug bringing up how are we going to get a return on Ken going down there, I think it's something we could pass on, and as a district can be fine, and because of where we're sitting financially, the water use going down, which is great, also that means cash flow's gone down, so that's the reason I'd take my position, I think it's a poor choice.
The, my comment is, is that Palm Springs is a very expensive place, and I, if there's any way to get this somewhere else, I think it would be better.
They select places like Palm Springs, Santa Barbara.
Monterey Bay.
Monterey.
Very expensive places.
They, they make them appetizing for a reason, they.
Sure, that way they get better attendance.
Exactly, yeah.
We got better attendance at Napa and Monterey, I hated it, because all they want is your money.
They put it out somewhere like Independence, you know, or you get to.
I don't like to spend money.
Charles Manson State, or something like that, probably wouldn't draw a whole lot of people, but that's why they choose places.
I don't know about the end of August, or starting, end of September, the first of, but I've had, I've had the good fortune, and I really have, because I love going to those kind of things. And you can tell this is a well put together one.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure we get our $2,000 back, like I mentioned earlier, the Coachella, are you signed up to go to that Coachella thing? The water district?
You haven't signed up for anything, because that costs money to sign up.
Yeah, that's 60 bucks for that one.
Right, so we haven't signed, you haven't signed for anything.
Thirty years ago, I had a tour of that, actually with an agricultural twist, the Coachella Water District, gets pictures of here somewhere, and it really was interesting, because I wasn't looking at it from the standpoint of PID or anything else, I was looking at it from the standpoint of ag, and they have a wastewater thing, it's explained in here on this, but, you know, you gotta bite the bullet once in a while, and I love to go to these things, just flat love, I can spend a lifetime going to these, okay, and thoroughly enjoying it.
I think Director Hunt always comes back with good ideas when he goes to these kind of things, and, and some new and innovative things that keeps our board maybe a little bit more on the cutting edge than the trailing edge, so.
But I read, I read.
I think some good learning experiences could be had from.
I read about these other municipalities, and I've watched a lot of them, both Orville and Chico setting out in the audience, and so you gotta bite the bullet once in a while, and, yeah. I'm ready to bite the bullet.
How much did that thing in Sacramento cost, do you remember?
I don't remember what it was sold at, it was five, $600 worth of it.
I don't think so. Couple hundred, by, we drive down.
But it was one day.
Yeah.
One day.
You don't stay over, you drive down, you drive back, and.
It's cost a lot less.
There's a lot of difference between Sacramento and Palm Springs, but if you wanted to put something together, Palm Springs would be the way to go.
That's a different meaning.
When you start talking hotels, we're talking hotels and meals, there is no difference.
No.
That's very true, I noticed that your, your hotel here was 157 a month, a night, yeah, 157 a night, that's, that's.
I paid that much over the weekend in South San Francisco, so.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's.
Santa Barbara, it's $199.
That wasn't even stayed in San Francisco, that was South San Francisco, so.
And that's a deal.
Got to check out the planes.
Roll call, please.
Director Corolla?
Yes.
Director Hunt?
Yes.
Director Flusher?
No.
Director Cala?
No.
President Duncan?
So I get to make the decision. Well, when I heard $2,000, I, I, I wish he could go, but I'll say no.
Okay, thanks for considering.
Yeah, it's, you get one that's less, I'll be glad to prove it, but I just, and it's.
They aren't, they aren't gonna be less ever, because that's where they, that's where they put on their nice training programs.
It's just, the Calafco ones aren't that expensive.
You know what, you know what I like to do, though? Let's really look at.
Well, this topic is over.
Aqua, look at.
Let's move on, because I, I got things I still need to do today.
Maybe it's nothing except a big bill, but you know, we are a special district, we do belong to Aqua, and, but I'd really like to look at it.
Right. Okay.
You know, if it's 20 or 30,000 dollars, well, then that's out the door now, for sure.
Don't quit bringing things to us, just because we said no.
If I, if I have the time, if it's the right time of the year, I can't go to the one in, that's held routinely in, in the first part of December, and then in the first week of May, because of the ballet commitments.
Mm-hmm.
So all of, those I continually miss. I made one day of one once, when they held it in Sacramento, because I could just drive down there for one day and then back here, but.
I always, I always miss anything from January to April 15th.
Yeah.
A lot of things happen. Okay, next item on the agenda is presentation on supplemental water treatment plan projects. Manager Barber, information only.
Yeah, this is a heads up presentation, and I got staff here to help answer any questions you have, but when you have a large project, like the process water project going on at the plant, it's gonna impact a lot of areas of the real estate there, you need to be aware of other things that we of the staff have gotten together and looked at, that need to potentially be added on to the project, because if you do these things after the fact, they could be much, much more expensive, and there's still needs that we have. So here's the plant overview, I'm gonna be bouncing back and forth to this, so I can explain it to you, but there's a treatment plant building, the old treatment plant, there's the pump state, raw water pump station, EQ tank, chlorine buildings down there, so I'll cover a few things. One of the things that you've already approved and needs to be included because of the transition and the piping and stuff, is the disinfection system replacement with sodium hypochlorite. You've approved that, we're moving forward to it, we can't put it together now, because we don't know where it's gonna be, and potentially because of the work they're doing, they're gonna be adding other chemical feed systems, et cetera, we need to coordinate it at the same time, especially if the chlorine building ends up being a place where we need to maybe use that real estate to better serve the final project. Along with that comes the chlorine grass scrubber decommission removal, that's that big ol' square tube, or round tube, next to the, the chlorine building, that's got equipment in it and things that need to be taken apart and removed, and that's something we, we're recommending be included in the contract, because at the same time, you're gonna be switching from chlorine glass to the liquid, and then you're gonna have to take care of these facilities and do, at least decommission them properly. And so if I go back, we're talking about, right there is where the scrubber is on the outside of the chlorine building. The, the other required issue that needs to be dealt with is the fish release relocation.
Was that up at the lake, George? Is that up at the lake?
No.
Okay.
No, we relieve, release a half a cubic foot per second for environmental purposes down the.
Release the water. Little Butte Creek.
Down Butte Creek.
That's under the water, the dam, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And right now, that water, that water is released, but it's released from our, it's connected to our raw water piping system here, so if we're going to blend this process water with, with the raw water, we can't utilize the same system, because we'd be creating a discharge at that point, so we need to actually get Megalia water being used to be the environmental release flow. Not a big added addition to the project, but it needs some evaluation. Right now, we can't gravity flow it reliably when the pumps kick on for the raw water, then we lose, we get into a negative head situation, and the flow would cut back during that process, so those are issues that an engineer needs to look at and hash out. So then we get on to other potential components, and I'm bringing this up to you, because we're working on a contract with ACOM, so they are gonna have alternative items of cost for doing a preliminary development review of these additional items, so you'll see them as separate line items when you see that contract proposal. So the first one's evaluation of recommendations on the pavement cracking and retaining wall movement. If you've been up there in a while, we have a retaining wall here that's moved some, there's cracks in the pavement that we've sealed many times, and they keep growing. This wall right here is a retaining wall that is, butts up against the twist, and that's, that's got some movement to it as well, so these are things we can't ignore, there's gonna be construction and building, et cetera, going on there, yes, sir.
How old is that retaining wall? Do you know where that wall was put in?
Goes with the plant, came in with the plant in 1995.
1995, okay.
Have you guys measured the movement lately?
I don't think we've reshot it, we've got a way to do it, but we haven't reshot it yet, it's only been six months.
Right, from, from this, what you can see from the mark of the wall, where it is being maintained, you can tell that from the inception of this movement, it's been several inches.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Then you can see.
Twenty years.
I just wondered, I saw your targets the last time I was up there.
That's almost 20 years.
If you shot those again or not.
Yeah, we haven't had a chance yet to establish that target.
Okay.
I've had a lot more movement than that in the last 20 years.
The next one is the 42-inch raw water pipe rehab and replacement. Going the wrong way. If you remember, we've had this discussion many times, the 42-inch pipeline crosses Little Butte Creek, it's sitting on top of unreinforced concrete pillars, it's kinda been on our bucket list of things to do for a long time. Recently, working with staff, Neil and Bill came up with an idea of, it may be because just fixing the piers isn't the only problem, you've got a, a pipe that probably put in the 60s, 50s, so you got a 70-year-old 42-inch pipe crossing that, so to just put, just fix the piers, you may have to turn around and do something with the pipe shortly thereafter, so we, they came up with the idea of maybe tying in somewhere around here, and just running a new line and connecting it and eliminating that crossing altogether.
In other words, you'd be about where the crossing's at, and I looked at that.
And you'd be up the hill.
Up the hill, and you may not have to, the creek would still be running down there where the other ones, that would, yeah.
Where the roadway goes over the creek?
No, actually, basically where the raw water storage tank is right now.
Yeah.
And just, you know how the road goes down over the hill, down to the lower building, to basically run right down that road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you come.
You don't even near the. You don't have to put any piers or anything in them.
No, you bury it, and since there's gonna be a lot of excavation going on with this project, et cetera, that's probably a real good thing for the buck to have that taken care of in this, this project as well. So that's another one you can expect to see, an option for evaluating. Plant water source, water system change, you've noticed probably, I think it's been in, was in the last budget, Jim's mentioned it in his monthly reports, about our hydro pneumatic tank being, needing replacement. The hydro pneumatic tank provides pressure, pressurized drinking water for use at the treatment plant, and it's in need of replacement, there's some options other than replacing it that should be evaluated, and I'll cover those a little more later in the presentation, but it is integral to this project. The last one is potential A-zone pump system and/or piping to accommodate the, the future. If you remember, on our strategic business plan, we had the, the idea, we have no redundancy with our 42-inch pipeline that goes all the way into town, and so on our strategic business plan, we identified a, a solution, which would be a pump station at the treatment plant, and a pipeline, a 16-inch pipeline into Paradise and tying into our A-zone. So if the 42 went, went away for some reason, landslide, earthquake, whatever, we have the ability to feed a minimal amount for indoor use to our customers while we got that fixed. Yes, sir.
I, I jumped on that with Jim, I think Jim was the one that presented it heavily, Bill, and I pounded, I've been pounding the drum on that one, you know, I said, the pipe is a million buck, estimated a million dollar, but you get above that, I, I've got it in here, but anyway, I think that is absolute must, simply like what you're talking about, we lose the 42-inch pipe, there's not an apple bottle of water, I'm just taking it from what Bill and Jim have told me. I mean, to me, that's, should be a top priority, I, it really should be.
Good to hear. What we're envisioning, and think, and the world's changed since that strategic business plan, we were looking at a pipeline, and a new A-tank, and then, and then back into town. Well, now that we've spent the money to rehabilitate the A-tank, that kind of gives us an opportunity to take a different look at it, and so what we're, what we're looking at at this point is we would take water and pump it, we tie into the skyway, and we would actually carry the pipeline along the new skyway alignment, instead of going up the hill and through town, because we're not looking at a new tank anymore, so that'll cut the cost down from what we were proposing before, and what we would need to do with this project is, we need to accommodate the future pumps for that project, and then a pipeline at least to get us out, out the gate, whichever direction we're going, so we get that pipeline installed in the ground while they're disturbing everything, and not trying to dig around all of those pipes later on.
Good.
I'm gonna, a couple of things, you know, I've been here 10 years, September 1st, and you learn something, one I hadn't heard before that just came up, and it came up in the discussion of the hydro pneumatic tank, is because of where the pipe is tapped to supply water to the treatment plant for drinking and all that stuff, it, it comes off the 42-inch pipe, and so the B-reservoir, if the B-reservoir gets too low, then you're sucking air and you no longer have water to the treatment plant, and so we essentially have lost the bottom six feet of the B-reservoir, and so by, by eliminating the hydro pneumatic tank and possibly pumping straight out of the clearwell with a new pump, we, we solve that problem. It's a pretty simple fix.
Is it B-reservoir, the tank that goes up and down?
B-reservoir is the.
Underground.
The underground floating cover, it's this one, right here.
Oh, okay, but it's the one we're talking about, potentially replacing?
Yes, correct, and so it's key to that whole discussion, and I'm gonna jump into that, because the other project we got going is B-reservoir replacement.
You know, well, that B-reservoir replacement, the figure that I saw is, and I found out we were talking about it, that had dug out where you look at it, was $6 million.
Well, that's what we have, that's the estimate we have, because that's the funding we think we could get.
Okay, whatever it is, but it was $6 million bucks.
So some of the things to think about, and they're, they're interrelated, and that's why they're brought up. The B-reservoir is only 16 feet deep, and so, and we have six feet on the bottom that's not usable, so we, we've got this investment, and we only have 10 feet of operating space in it.
Isn't it, I, I remember. Isn't the pipe, I remember, the pipe's twenty feet underneath that reservoir or something that feeds it? Is that fine?
I tried to leave, but I don't want to leave because it's about to use the pipe right there by B-res.
I remember the discussion, I can't think of his name now, terrible name. He was on the board and he said that when they put it in, he's a field superintendent.
I don't know. I just...
Yeah, we don't know. It's deep.
Yeah, he said something like twenty or twenty-five feet. They had to go down in the ground to put that pipe in to make it work.
It could be very deep. We do know that the land we have has a big sloping elevation, so it's from zero to thirty-two foot difference. So, that's problematic when you're trying to build a tank and you're limited on the elevation and where it can go. But there's a couple, well, I'll get to that. And go ahead.
I'm trying to think of the right word. I didn't know what it is, but it's like cavitating. You were talking about the six-foot. Is there any possibility with the elevations that we have, because I've seen this in a couple of Ag situations, of the forty-two inch pipe, that we could collapse it, like cavitate, that's not the word, it's not cavitation like in a pump or a prop, but collapse it. They have to watch this on pin stocks. Some of my friends are powerhouse operators, and you know, these big long pin stocks, they can collapse those damn things, blow right out of the ground.
And we don't have enough elevation difference to really have that as a concern, I think.
Okay, good.
The forty-two inch pipeline is also equipped with some air vacuum valves on it.
What?
Forty-two inch pipeline is equipped with air vacuum valves. The designers of the pipeline originally, you know, concerned about that as well, so they put valves in.
Yeah.
And set.
George.
So, we're pretty safe there.
This whole problem that you're talking about now is to provide, make sure we provide drinking water to the plant?
That's what's causing the loss of the bottom six feet.
Right, the potential problem that could come up. And we couldn't just use ladles during that time?
Dipper or bottled water?
I mean, do we really?
Yeah, no, you can't because it's more than that. Because when we make chlorine, whether this system we use now or the new system, you're using water and you're adding the chlorine to it to get the right concentration. All of our chemicals use the fresh water and then they blend a more concentrated chemical in before it gets used. So, it's not just drinking. It's all the plant process uses. So, the plant can't operate without it.
Let's make sure to rename that, not plant drinking water to plant usage water because...
Just like that fish.
I can see exactly Ken's point, that the public will get a hold of that and...
The other challenging issue is the B-res is in one of our post-rock excavation areas. There's post-rock all over in that area. And so, that's going to make excavation difficult, just so you're aware of it. And then if we go too big, you know, at one point, we're talking about ten million gallon concrete tank, long and skinny. Our winter flows are so low now, that could add a couple, three days to our residence time of our water, which means we have to deal with water quality issues, increase the chlorine, whatever, keep it mixing, all kinds of issues come with that. So, making one too big may sound like a great idea, but it's not in our best interest. But one of the benefits, if we get the A-zone installed and we're going to try and get, we're going to approach this with our funding source. If A-zone is delivered directly from the treatment plant, that whole demand, it allows you to actually have a smaller B-reservoir. Because every drop of A-zone water now goes through the B-reservoir. And so, that's storage that we have for that purpose and process.
Are we pumping water uphill in from the B-reservoir to...
Yes, to the A-zone.
To the top of the A-zone?
Yes.
So, we get rid of the pumping charges then?
No, no. We'll start to pump, but we won't pump as much as high of a lift.
So, the lift would be lower and you save on energy to push the water.
Well, we'd be pumping at the water treatment plant.
Correct.
Up over the hill or long skyway, and that would go right directly to the A-zone tank.
Yes. Well, directly to the pipes that connect to the A-zone.
A-zone.
I don't think there's any tank above the B-zone.
And if we had a blowout in the forty-two, let's hope it never happens, but you know, we could bypass all of that and at least keep water in town.
Pretty much pump to the A-zone and then gravity all the way down.
Gravity, the rest of the town would be basically gravity.
Yeah. The other thing that, so that, not only does it eliminate the demand for storage, but it also improves the hydraulics. If we don't have to put that water through the forty-two inch pipe, then we have more space, for lack of a better word, to push water through there. And it allows us to actually, we don't lose as much head for the same demand in the community.
Okay.
And so, we could even bump the height a little bit of the B-reservoir or a new B-reservoir.
Isn't, what we're talking about, isn't that the most dangerous place where we could lose water pressure for fire control or something? Something happened to the forty-two inch line, we basically wouldn't have any way to replace the water.
Yeah, we'd have no water in town.
No water in the upper A-zone.
No, we'd have no water in the entire district.
Well, no, the district, forty-two. There was some discussion about the upper part of the A-zone having, not having adequate water pressure or something else.
Yeah, that's being solved with our SCADA work there. When we had a fire in the lower parts of A-zone, we could reduce the pressure in the upper parts because it won't keep up fast enough. But now with the new SCADA system, we solve that problem.
Oh, okay.
And then the second part of the SCADA project is control, actual control it at the rest of our reservoir, C, D, and E. And so, that's actually created storage for us, usable storage. Right now, it just operates on, I need to keep full, so it opens bigger when it starts dropping and then it closes off when it starts filling up. So, you have tanks that are bouncing around in the top part of their storage, which is great. You have storage for fire protection, but you don't have storage that's really usable. So, with this new SCADA project that you already approved, we can have control of those tanks and we can say, you know, the C-tank can drop more before we actually kick on the valve and fill it back up. So, that creates essentially additional storage, which further reduces our need for as big a B-res as we possibly can.
How much have we already approved for SCADA?
I don't know. You know, the total cost of all of SCADA, seven, eight thousand, something like that?
Well, there's a lot of other components to that, but the SCADA component is small.
Yeah, yeah, that one was a smaller part.
What, small, two hundred thousand?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, oh, all right. Less than a new pickup, right?
Yep. So, this is more, just to kind of bring you up speed on this issue, so when you're looking at this contract, you're not shocked. You can see the linkage between the B-reservoir project and this project. So, when you're considering whether to add the A-zone pumping portion of the, to the AECOM project, you understand what the long-term picture is for that. The other thing is, until we get an engineer onboard and actually start kicking off design options, we don't know what size we're going to get. We're going to try and minimize the expense, of course. Director Hunt reminded me of an option. One of my last projects at South Heather, we had, our clear well at the treatment plant was built the same as B-res, but with more stable bank material, and it was square. But rather than building a new tank, we put up walls and a roof and a liner on the bottom, which was much less costly than a tank itself. And so, that, my initial, when I first got to the district, I kind of poo-pooed that idea because you've got post-rock, it's not a really well-constructed embankment that can be engineered for load bearing. But now that we fast-forward ten years later, if we looked at drilling posts for supports and the costs we're kind of envisioning, that's still an option that'll be on the table where we could put a roof over the B-res and a liner on the bottom without building an entirely new tank. So, that'll be an option the engineer explores when we get him onboard. So, there's your primer, little heads-up before we get to the actual contract approval. Any other questions?
You got any idea how much additional cost we're looking at?
No. They're not really huge. I mean, initially, it's just engineering, so that cost won't, I don't anticipate to be very high. The construction costs itself, you know, the A-zone stuff that we have in our long-term plans, you know, a reasonable place to start on cost.
I remember looking at, because I was really interested in this, still have, the pipe was a mil, million, but then you had to pump it in there, and I think you were looking at a couple million dollars by the time you got it all done.
Yeah, and I think with...
I'd have to go to my books and look.
I think with the new route going down the new skyway, there's no services, there's actually a pretty easy traffic plan because you can move people over to one side and send the other ones through Old Magalia.
Right.
There's no connections, so I would expect we're looking at less than that.
Good.
And our hope is, by getting the engineer onboard and being able to tell that correctly to our funding opportunity, that we'd be able to add that pipeline into the B-res entire project cost. Because you're saving, you're creating...
When you say the funding opportunity, you're talking about the people that are going to loan us the money?
Yes.
To do this.
Yep.
We'd be looking at someplace between, just round figures, ten to fifteen now. All this needs to be done, basically the A-zone as far as I've concerned.
Well, you're definitely ten to fifteen if you got B-res.
We really shouldn't discuss prices, really at this, at this point in time, we really shouldn't discuss prices because we have no idea and we should wait till our engineers' report.
Yep.
To give numbers out in front of a certain person that's in our crowd, really never pays off for us, never pays off for us in the long run. So, we should really hold that conversation until later.
From two million to fifteen million, remember?
I remember that. I was the one that told you that.
But if they hadn't said the two million, we wouldn't be talking about it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, we've got a meeting with, Treatment Plant and I have a meeting with AECOM tomorrow, so we're going to...
With who?
With AECOM.
Who's going to be our direct contact, Tom? Wasn't that his name, Tom Bernard?
Bernard?
Yeah.
He'll be the highest level project manager. Joe, the other guy that here...
That was here?
He'd be the project.
Okay.
Main project guy.
The other guy who here was Tom?
Tom, yep.
What will he be?
Head of the class.
Tom is the top guy who probably won't put a lot of hours in this project, but he'll bring his experience of construction to the mix, so he'll look at stuff and guide him.
The guy that gave us the presence, I kept, I got those two guys to me, was Joe.
Yeah.
So, actually, Tom is higher than Joe.
Correct.
But Tom told me that Joe was the boss.
Of this project.
Of the project, okay, of this project, okay.
Because he's going to stamp it, that's why.
I understand the same.
Let me share, Tom, I found out from Joe, Tom is the vice site and civil section or group for AECOM, which site and civil work in a project like this is substantial. Joe is a manager in the water group.
Okay.
They're separate groups. They're both going to be working very hard, so Tom is in a slightly different area, but really key to this project.
Yeah.
And I'm sure Joe, Joe has a boss at level of Tom.
When I was talking, after the meeting, when I was talking to Tom, that Joe finally up straightened out. You know, I mentioned that when Tom gave the program here, he said twenty-five thousand employees that they had.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, something like that, worldwide. They're now pushing ninety. They've done a lot of mergers with other companies. And he said they're pushing ninety thousand employees. So, they got bigger all the time.
Yep. But we're having a kickoff meeting with them tomorrow because we want to make sure they understand the project as best as we possibly can. Because that's the key.
Now, what we gave you permission for, and I agree with this, when you get it all aired out, AECOM and all that, you're going to bring back the costs.
Yep, engineering.
And we say yay, now, the way you wrote it up in there was really good, George. Because it's either, you know, so...
The design cost.
Yep.
The design cost, yeah. The design cost.
Not project cost.
Not project cost, the design cost.
So, we've been designing before, we can start seeing.
But they're not going to be doing it, the design thing, until we approve it.
Correct.
But we're paying them for their meeting tomorrow or whatever. They're doing that as part of it.
No, it's similar to when we have requests for proposals. Every engineering firm comes out and spends a few hours with you to make sure they understand the project.
It's going to be part of their request for proposal.
Okay, good.
All right.
The lawyers call, the first contact is free.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions of anybody? Okay.
I think a lot of this stuff aired out before we get into the project, it's good thinking on your guys' part, George, you and Jim and Neil and whoever else is involved in it, you know. Because you've all, we've all seen it where they get started and then all of a sudden, boom, you know. But I know both Joe and Tom, Mr. Dave, that they don't like change orders at all. They said change order is a lose-lose situation. That's what we want to try to keep, bro.
That's why we want to get it up front, add all these projects together while we've got the ground torn up.
Right. Okay, next item on the agenda is director's comments. Bill? I think it's good what you're putting several problems together to be considered for corrections and changes.
Here it comes.
I'm just concerned about money and to the district and the financial needs. Other than that, I think the ideas are fine, but I'll keep harping on the money end of it, so. Okay. Doug?
Well, I would agree with that on this. Of course, we didn't know about item number B under three here, but I think it's really good thinking. I compliment you guys for thinking out of the box and as far down the road as you can. Appreciate, appreciate you doing that.
Okay.
And also keeping us posted, George. That's really good.
Okay, Ken?
I have no comment today.
No comment, okay. Seth?
I'd just like to thank you all for having me here today, and I look forward to more meetings like this in the future. Now, you guys are right on track with getting all these little things together because we got the ground torn up, it is much better to take care of these problems. They're all problems that have been on our hit list. So, if we can wipe three or four of the five or six or ten or however many we got on our hit list, you know, out, we want to do that while the ground's torn up, so, good job, guys.
Okay, I have no comments myself. Okay, item five is closed session, conference with labor negotiations. Guess we don't have to ask the public if they want to talk about it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.